This conference will now be recorded.
We've got everybody here. Commissioner Webb, I do not see. But we have Commissioner Banks, Commissioner Toyota, Commissioner Thompson. So we'll go ahead and get started. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings. We have three items on the agenda. We'll have our county manager update next to the biannual Klatzip Behavioral Healthcare update on page three, and then we'll have a discussion on short-term rentals. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to our county manager.
Thank you, Chair Quayle, members of the Board. So last night, our Public Works and County Manager staff were out in Westport with Commissioner Banks and about 40 others to talk about the road alignment, the proposed road alignment for the ferry and for truck traffic. And so I think some good feedback was received, and we'll schedule a work session for your Board to go through that in a little bit more detail. So I think it was a good event, and I appreciate staff's work on that. The other is we're having, I think it's the second now wildfire stakeholder meeting this afternoon. It's with a lot of the fire stakeholders, the county, and various others. And we're still really talking about some enforcement issues for illegal fires, as well as some education outreach efforts. And then we are, there's a number of funding streams that the county has been interfacing with, one being for some dykes and levy analysis and improvement ultimately. And then the other is on the courthouse improvement funds, which the county has been working towards to improve our secure access into the courthouse. So there's a lot going on with the legislative session also, but in these short sessions, it's hard to even, you think you know what's happening, and five minutes later, it's no longer what's happening. So we'll just keep, we'll continue to monitor that as well. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. Appreciate county staff efforts on those issues, especially the levies and dykes. That's a big, that's a big deal. So that's great. Any other Commissioner comments at this time? Any questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the agenda. Next is the biannual Klatzip Behavioral Healthcare update on page, and I believe Director Amy Baker, hi, Amy, is here, and I'll turn it over to Amy.
Thank you, Chair Quayle and the Commissioners. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. I am gonna do my, here are my PowerPoint slide. I don't know if you've ever noticed, but like the more you want to do something, the less likely it is to work. Look at that. So Teresa, should I just ask you to change slides?
Yes, if that works for you.
It totally works for me. That would be awesome. Thank you. And can I ask a quick question? How much time do I have with this presentation?
I think we're fine. We have, are you planning for 30 minutes or so, Amy?
Yes, I'm sure I have 30 minutes.
Okay, yeah, I think that that will be fine. And if I ask everyone to mute their phones if you're not presenting or talking, please. I see there's one phone. It looks like it's from LS. Leslie Smith, if I could have you mute your phone, please. And County Manager, did you have a comment on the, on the time?
No, I was just gonna confirm what you said, Chair Quayle. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. Okay, Amy.
Great, thank you. Next slide, Teresa. So I, for this presentation, I'd kind of like to, I'd kind of like to start broad. I often will present some snippets of data for you, but I really want to paint a broader picture because I think it's important for folks to understand like where we are at this point in time around our understanding as it relates to mental health. And I think it's, and I think it's fair to say that, that the pandemic has really taught us a lot about what it means to be mentally healthy. And I, and I think we'll learn a lot from that process. And so, so kind of where we are at this point in time is that the, the understanding of mental health and mental wellness is evolving. And historically, it's been centered around the perception that, that mental illness is the product of a chemical imbalance. And there is, there is increasing understanding that that's not actually true and that our environment is as influential over people's mental wellbeing as is, as is their genetics and their DNA. And in fact, in countries that are conflict-affected, they see rates of depression and anxiety that range between one in five people suffering from depression and anxiety, whereas in the rest of the world, it's closer to one in 14. So, so the reason why this is important is that, is that, that when we talk about, like, when we talk about prevention, particularly as it relates to depression and anxiety, we have to understand that it's, there are so many factors that affect people's mental wellbeing, including what the economy looks like, what one's social connectedness looks like, all of those, all of those things. And, and I think that while we've, the science has come a long way in terms of producing pharmaceuticals that are helpful in treating mental health conditions, it doesn't work for everybody. And, and there are increasing studies that show that depression, psychopharmacological treatments don't work for people with mild to moderate depression. So, so I'm wanting you to understand that we have some effective treatments. They're evidence-based. They don't work for everybody, and we still don't understand this field as well as we should. And perhaps the more important point is that, and I say this to my staff all the time, we don't fix people. We do not fix people. People fix themselves. And that, the sense of wellbeing and how somebody's doing is really fluid, and it depends on what's happening in their environment. It depends on their family supports. It depends on all, all sorts of job situation, housing situation. All of those things contribute to people's sense of mental wellbeing. Next slide. So, so Maslow, and probably some of you have heard about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Maslow never intended this to be a concept that's based on building blocks where you achieve one, one thing after the other. It's actually much more fluid than that, and it changes over time. But that basically, the basic concept behind Maslow's hierarchy is that you can't, you can't work on some of the higher-level things unless you have your basic needs met. And that includes like food and shelter, like those are at the bottom of the hierarchy, as is belonging and love. And when we work within our field with folks who have mental health disorders and substance use disorders, those three components are often missing. And it means that you can't, you can't work on some of the other, the other pieces unless those three things get met, which is why our quest to increase housing options for our clients is so important. Next slide, please. So, so given, given that what we know is true is that, one, asking for help is really hard. People have a hard time asking for help, and often they don't ask for help until they're in a crisis. And that's either a crisis that they've identified themselves or a crisis that somebody else has identified for them. And so what Klatzip Behavioral Healthcare has done pretty diligently over the last two years is to increase the number of services and programs that we provide that are much more outward-focused, meaning that somebody doesn't have to necessarily schedule an appointment and come to a first appointment in order to get help. And so that looks like our Rapid Access Center, which is open nine to, nine to three, Monday through Friday, and anybody can just walk in. They could walk in and they could see a person with a master's degree, and, and that ranges anywhere from helping somebody with their basic needs, talking through a crisis. This is really good for the folks who are not able to, to schedule or wait for appointments. Our mobile crisis team has been going out. We've been doing a lot of response with law enforcement. We've served 216 people over the past year, and with about 869 services provided. And then our Recovery Ally team, which has now expanded to five recovery allies. The bulk of the 450 that they've served in the last, in the last year, those are largely individuals who are not open with Klatzip Behavioral Healthcare, but they're people that we see as having substance use issues and the need for support and ongoing assistance. Next slide, please. And so the total for, for clients served in 2021, we've had a total of 1,871 unique individuals with 18,523 hours of service. And 869 of those folks either had, had no insurance or insufficient insurance to cover the cost of care that we provided. And there is, those are not two distinct categories of, of people. There's a lot of overlap between the two because people's insurance will go on and off. Sometimes they'll start out with us with no insurance, and then we help them get insurance. And that's a, that will be an important consideration in some of the other data that I present. Next slide. So these are, these are some of the different services that we provide. And I lumped a lot of these together because they're, because you don't want to look at a row of 20 services. So you can see the, the yellow bar is basically Columbia Pacific CCO. They're our primary, they're our primary funder. And the State General Fund category, that includes people with no insurance and insufficient insurance. So you can kind of see the breakdown. And these are not, these are not unique individuals because you will have clients who are involved in like adult mental health and psychiatry, or child mental health and psychiatry, or substance use disorder treatment and ACT. And some folks start out in crisis, and then they end up in outpatient services. I think that's one of the, I think that's one of the, the really impressive strengths that we offer as an organization is that we're able to see somebody in one part of our system and then transition, transition them to the appropriate service that's going to best benefit them. In other areas that, where these services are divvied up by different organizations, those transitions and processes are much, much more clunky. And I just wanted to add, I don't know that I pointed this out on the last slide, that basically the State General Fund that we receive that goes from Oregon Health Authority to Klatzip County, it's about 18% of our total, total funding. Next slide, please. And then these are, this is the hours of service to, to specific clients. And this is like largely divvied up by our service elements. So our, our contract with, with you all that, that comes through the state is, is broken down by service elements. And so this kind of shows the number of folks who are served in those service elements that are State General Fund, and then the total hours of service. I added Coast Guard in there because that's been a, a new development for us. It took us like almost three years to figure out how to get and accept TRICARE insurance. They're, they're a persnickety insurance provider to work with, and it took us a really long time to, to work through the kinks of that. But we are able to provide care for our, our Coast Guard members and their families. And again, these are duplicated clients because they could be in multiple programs. But you can see the, the, the total number of clients and the total hours of service. Next slide, please. So this is another, this is another data point. And I fully intended to do like a national comparison, like for our average number of sessions based on the program type, but I couldn't, I couldn't find it. I looked, I probably spent a good 30 hours looking, and there's really no consensus around what the right number of sessions is per client. And, and so that, and so that should probably be obvious, right? If we go back to the Maslow's hierarchy of need, not everybody is starting at the same, same starting point when they come into care, meaning that our, our total number of sessions is going to look really different for somebody who doesn't have a support system versus somebody who does have a support system, or somebody who has employment, or somebody who has friends and family. Like all of those things affect like how long somebody could potentially be in care. Yes, Commissioner Thompson, I saw you had a question?
Thank you. Well, and I am so grateful for data because it gives me the illusion that we just have a better grip on reality if we have some data. So I really appreciate this. So crisis, I'm pretty familiar with. Child's substance use disorder, I get that. What's MAT?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for asking. I am, I'm particularly proud of this one. Medication-assisted treatment. So that's our program that is like primarily targets folks who have opioid use disorder. When, when I used to work at Cascadia, and we had folks who were coming in who were, who were using heroin or, or prescribed opioids, we typically wouldn't be able to keep those folks in service for longer than a few sessions because the, the pain of going through withdrawal was so intense that talking to somebody just doesn't, doesn't cut it. And as you see, when you look at this data, that, that program actually has the highest number of sessions, which means that, that, that what we're offering and what we're doing there is, is working for the clients who are staying engaged. It's, it's really a pretty, it's, it's, I mean, and again, like I, I don't have national standard. Unfortunately, I don't have national standards to back it up against. But from my experience, that's a really good number.
Well, from my experience as well, which is not as extensive nor as precisely related as yours, but the, the thrill of a warm and fuzzy relationship, that you are able to substitute that for the thrill of the instant self-control, self-administered impact of chemicals.
Yeah.
That's, that's very impressive. Thank you.
Well, and it's the, the, and yeah, so Rick, Rick is our, our lead on that, and he's really fantastic. But it is also the, the medication that takes away some of the craving and the effects of the withdrawal that really helps. And I wish, I wish we had a similar treatment that would work for methamphetamine. I think we would see better rates of retention for that particular population. But that just, the, the science hasn't caught up with us there just yet. And then, as you would expect, our mandated clients have more sessions because there's an, an external sense of accountability around ensuring that they stay in treatment while they're, usually mandated means they have a probation and parole officer who's involved in making sure that they're following through on their treatment. So, next slide, please. So, so, so by now you've gathered that, that, that how you get people into service is really important. And one of the things that can happen, particularly when you have a, a program like the Rapid Access Center, is that you get them in quickly, and then they wait forever for their next appointment because it creates a, it creates a bottleneck. And, and what we've seen is that we've, most individuals are able to get two services within 30 days, which is, it's pretty good. Like I wish it was three services within 30 days, but, but based on the workforce shortages that we're seeing at CBH and all across the state, I'm, I'm pretty happy with that first number. We track the data of first contact to first scheduled appointment. It was 11 days. The state requirement is 14 days. That has gone down to zero days with the Rapid Access Center. Not for all clients. Some clients still want to call and schedule an appointment. And then the data of referral to see a psychiatrist is 20 days. There are parts of the state where that time, that timeframe looks more like two, three months. And I'm, I'm hearing reports that, that there are folks on waitlists to get into mental health counselors in the Portland area that can, can be anywhere from two to three months. So all things considered, we're doing pretty good. And then the last piece that I just wanted to add with that is that there is a real, a real psychiatry shortage. People aren't going into that field in part because it takes longer to get the degree, and you get paid less, which makes no sense whatsoever. And in, for instance, in Washington State, half of all counties don't have a single psychiatrist. We have a part-time child psychiatrist. We have a part-time adult psychiatrist. And we have a psychiatric nurse practitioner. And I'm in the process of working on getting a, a primary care doctor for our clients who have comorbid mental health and physical health conditions. Next slide, please. And next slide after that. So, so in spite of how challenging this time has been, and it, and it really has, like it's, our, our staff are tired. They have carried the, the brunt of human suffering and angst through the last two years of the pandemic. And, and that's a, that's a really tall order, especially as they have gone through the same experiences themselves. We, last summer, I was worried that we were going to lose a significant number of our employees due to burnout. And so we quickly implemented a four-day work week because in absence of rate increases and funding to be able to do any kind of dramatic salary increases, we decided we can at least try to address the work-life balance issue. And so we did, not all of our staff, mobile crisis and residential are not on the four-day work week because it really wasn't feasible to do those two programs, but all the other programs are. And we've had to work really hard to make sure that balls don't get dropped and that communication continues to flow and that client care is not affected by the four-day work week. But I really, I really think it was a, it was a miracle in terms of retaining our staff. And in spite of all of those challenges, we've managed to increase our programming, include new services. And a lot of that has really been driven by staff themselves. And so mobile crisis ride-along, that's one of them. The county has been a fantastic partner around helping us make this happen. We've hired our first clinician who's been partnering with Astoria Police Department. It's, the program's really still in its, in its infancy in terms of like establishing relationships and protocols and all of those things. We're, made an offer to the second clinician, who will hopefully be coming on soon. And our goal, of course, is that, is that we are coresponding with police to behavioral health crises and that we're also doing proactive outreach for individuals who may have frequent contacts with, with law enforcement to see if there's more effective ways that we can serve and help them and mitigate their needs so that police don't spend so much time addressing folks who may have mental health or so, social service concerns. Next slide, please. I'm sure you've all heard about Heritage Square. Sorry, I had a, one of my board members said, "Congratulations, Amy. You picked the most controversial project you possibly could have." And I said, "Thanks." So, so, so obviously I don't, that conversation is ongoing, but I do think that we, Klatzip Behavioral Healthcare, we are not going to be successful in our mission if we don't figure out how to, how to house people. And it's, it's for the exact same reasons that I shared with you on the Maslow's hierarchy of need, that I, it is impossible to provide treatment when somebody doesn't have a place to live. And Heritage Square, this is one of the early designs. It's not the most current. I basically use this as a, as a placeholder, just to bring up the conversation. But it's, the, the design is evolving as, as conversations happen with the community around community needs. But we're, I'm, I am eager and excited to be able to, to really to be able to do something different with some of our clients. And we just opened the Warrenton Recovery duplex in the last couple of weeks, and we're placing clients as we speak. Some of the feedback that I've heard so far from folks is that, from the folks that we're placing, is that they're, they're thrilled. For some of us, the first time they've had their own bedroom in, in as long as they can possibly remember. And, and again, like when we have conversations about safety being a basic need, like that is, having four walls and a locking door is sometimes the closest thing that anybody's going to have to feeling safe. And so people who have been on the streets and struggling with substance use disorder forever are now getting an opportunity to be housed. So that, that has been incredibly, incredibly exciting. Our, we've, we've placed our first client in the permanent supported housing in Seaside. She was kind of a, she spent probably two years at North Coast Crisis Respite and Residential Center. And now she's got an opportunity to step out into the community, and that's what you want to see. You want to see people have options to move from, from, from one, one service to the next and to successfully get their needs met and to, to, to go back to like living a normal life, working and contributing to society. Next slide, please.
Oh, no, wait, Amy. Wait, hang on.
Sorry, Amy. I see that Commissioner Thompson has a question there.
Well, Amy, controversy, yes. I'm a lifetime member of the Astoria Senior Center, and I've been getting a lot of emails about your project. I wonder if you've reached out so that... I wonder if you've reached out so that the seniors feel secure and safe in their community as well?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Thompson, I really appreciate that question. Yes. Stuart Emmons and I met with them, like, uh, we met with Larry Miller. The weeks are running together. It was either last Monday or the Monday before. And I understand the issue for them is that they really want to continue to have access to the parking lot that's directly across the street from the senior center. Um, and I think, I think there's also concern that, uh, concerned about having folks with mental health issues like right across from the senior center. And I think, I think the, the piece, and it's hard for me to figure out how to explain this in a way that people will understand, is that when, when, when people with mental health disorders are housed and they're taken care of, more often than not, you can't tell them apart from anybody else. And so this, this, you know, this, uh, one flew over the cuckoo's nest vision that people have in their head or, or from folks who look highly unstable, who are homeless and on the street and not getting their needs met. That's not, that's not what's going to happen. You know, we had our, our office at, uh, 12th Street and, uh, nobody knew we were there. We don't have ambulance coming in and out of, uh, North Coast Crisis Respite and Residential Center. When you meet people's needs, um, they do, they do well. And, and this housing, of course, is not going to be for everybody. Like, we'll expect some, some level of stability prior to moving in. And we understand that the neighborhood that we live in. But I, I, uh, truly believe that the, the streets of Astoria are far less safe with the number of folks we have unhoused than what it would be if we could house some of our people who need that housing. Like, that's just, that's just how it is.
It's compassionate and it's the right thing to do and it has good results. I hear you, Amy. Thank you.
Yep.
Amy, I see that Commissioner Toyoka has a question as well.
Yes, Commissioner?
Can't hear you. Can you hear me now?
Yep, can hear you now.
Perfect. Thank you. Amy, I don't need to add your controversy, but I just wanted to tell you what I've been, the feedback I've been getting. You know, like, so like the food truck, one, one instance I had was a discussion of the food trucks near that little food court nearby. They just got broken into. And they say, you know, yes, probably that transient population, but they were comfortable. He said, "It's not," the feedback I got was, "It's not the locals, the transient homeless" "that are really causing the issues. The local homeless, they say they have relationships with and they're working, but the, it's the larger, you know, 90% of the homeless are transient population. And they're the ones that don't have much regard for what's going on and that's where they're having issues." And, you know, and they said, like, even Lifeboat Services, great people, great program, but the same location is problematic. Kind of, so I was, they, or these group directed me to look at projects similar to this, uh, proposed program here. And it, you know, like, look at Portland one, and the economic and social change that happened in the, in the neighborhoods where these, uh, type developments are going in, it really does change the dynamic of the area. And not necessarily for the better. So that's something that has to be looked at. It's like, yes, you're treating one, but what are you doing to the other? You know, what are you doing to the town and the people who live there, the businesses there, the, the residents current? You know, the, the impact on them bringing in somebody. That's why, you know, the stronger, the, I guess, the argument for like microhousing or some other site. So I guess the feedback I'm always getting is, is the program is wonderful. You know, the, what you're doing is great, it's just the locations are problematic. And then the last feedback I got was from, you know, it's, it's Heritage Square. And some of the donors who've already donated to the, the Chinese Park and all that, it, they were sold on the concept of Heritage Square. So they would be multicultural from the history of Astoria, you know, developing this area as a community park, heritage of all the cultures. And then the money they put into it now is nothing because it's going to change that as well. So there's two different avenues people are looking at that I'm getting feedback on. Just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, no, I, I, I appreciate that. And I, I've, uh, I've heard similar feedback. I have been, as many of you know, I've been looking for, uh, alternative placement to, to, to offer per-permanent supportive housing for almost three years now. And, and, and every site has the same concerns. Great idea. We definitely need it, but not here. And, and as you know, like, there's just, there's not, there's not an enormous amount of, uh, buildable land in, in Clatsack County. Part of the appeal of this project for CBH is that we're able to tag along with, uh, with Elin, who's doing the, the bigger workforce housing project. We're able to tap into their, their housing development expertise, their ability to draw in, uh, low-income tax credits as well as funding from Oregon Community Housing Services. And, and, uh, given the complexity of this site, both with the pit and the, and I'm not a construction person, so, so please don't ask me any questions about it because I'm, this is as far as my expertise goes. But given the complexity of the site, I, I, I don't know that there's going to be, I mean, you're, you're looking at 15, $20 million to put something else on there, like, uh, you know, piazza or whatever it is that plaza that people are talking about. And, um, uh, even the housing that, that, uh, Walt Postolaid's doing out by Safeway, it sounds like that's going to require short-term rentals in order to make that project pencil. So there is no, there, there is no going to, no, no affordable housing solution that's going to come without, um, uh, state and federal assistance. It's just not going to happen. So, um, again, like, I probably shouldn't even have shared this design because I think our, our group that we're working with are really interested in hearing feedback. And it's, and it's po, it's very possible that the final design will shift based on that, if, if this whole thing is able to go through. And again, what I would say, like, to your, um, I know people are worried about having folks with mental illness in downtown Astoria, but what I, what I have to say is that they're already there. The difference would be that they're housed and so they're less likely, less likely to cause disturbances and concerns. People who have a place to go are much less likely to, to be disruptive. Oh, sorry. And my last point, because this one's come up several times, is that, um, our intention is not to, I, I'm not, I'm not interested in providing housing for the whole state of Oregon. Like, what we're developing is, is for, uh, local Clatsack County residents. And there are plenty of local, local Astorians who have been here, fifth generation, who have, who have just been priced out of the market. And I've talked to a lot of young adults who, uh, have no hope of living in Astoria because they can't, they just can't afford the rents. So. So anyway, so, but we'll, we'll, uh, it's, it's an ongoing discussion. Uh, next slide. So it wouldn't be an Amy Baker presentation unless I told you about the, the, the bad stuff that's also happening. And, uh, y'all have asked me in the past, uh, when I need help to ask for it. And so, um, our challenge has been that, that the rates for behavioral health have been flat and they've been flat for multiple years. That's been true through Columbia Pacific CCO and it's also been true from the state of Oregon. And of course, as you all know, the cost of living has increased. I really believe the only reason why, uh, OHA's gotten away with this is because of the stigma attached to the, to the services we provide. If this was any other, i- any other healthcare service, that would never happen. There are providers all across the state who are threatening to go out of business. We've lost several residential providers because the rates are so low that it's hard for them to stay in business. Um, and in fact, uh, our, our North Coast Crisis Respite and Residential Program has, uh, OHA owes us over, uh, $200,000 in back claims that they're, um, that they're not, they're not paying for various reasons. So, uh, oh, right. And then last but not least, OHA came out with a proposal to basically fine counties for not moving aid and assist clients out of the state hospital in time. So there's, uh, there are a lot of challenges. There are challenges happening statewide. We're certainly experiencing that here. And, uh, would, personally, I would very much like appreciate your, your advocacy for our programs at the state level because I, you know, they're just not, uh, apparently Amy Baker is a squeaky wheel. Um, and I don't, I don't necessarily ca-carry the same clout as a, as a, as a county commissioner does.
Please reach out to me and tell me who to talk to and I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And that is, that is all I have for my formal presentation.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions, comments? Any additional questions and comments?
No fair ending on Debbie Downer, though, okay?
Well, it's worse if I start with Debbie Downer.
I think to echo Commissioner Thompson's, uh, overture there to, to assist, uh, I would share that as well. I think we, the entire commission would, would like to carry that message for you and, uh, just let us know what we can be doing.
Thank you.
Okay. If we don't have any other, uh, questions, comments, I'll, uh, move on to the next agenda item. But thank you Director Baker for the, for the presentation, um, and for the Q and A. And, uh, uh, thank you for joining us. Have a great day. Next item is the short-term rentals discussion. We've got our community, uh, Development Director Gail Hendrickson with us, County Manager Boone. Who would like to start this discussion? Do we want to turn it over to our, uh, Community Development Director, Gail?
Yes, thank you. And I wanted to also thank the county manager and county council for their assistance on this. Uh, we have been working together as a sort of internal staff committee to, uh, put the recommendations together that we'll be presenting this morning. And thank you again to the, uh, board, uh, for the extra time to, uh, talk through this. So, uh, if you remember, we had a first reading of ordinance, uh, 2201 scheduled, uh, at the request of the board. We did remove that from the agenda and we have gone through a staff, as I stated, and made some additional, uh, recommendations. Depending upon the outcome of today's discussion, uh, staff is currently anticipating that any zoning revisions would be sent forward to the Planning Commission on March 8th. And then any revisions, both to the zoning code and the county code of regulations, would tentatively be coming back before the board for two public hearings in April. So when we put together the recommendations for today's work session, uh, we use the following as our foundation or our underpinnings for making these recommendations. Uh, the first is that the role of the county is really to provide services that are offered countywide and offer a county-wide benefit as opposed to offering services that are only going to benefit a specific geographic area. Uh, we also need to regulate short-term operations and that's done through our county code and not our zoning code. And the reason we do that is to ensure that public health, safety, livability, and efficient administration and enforcement occurs. And then finally, we want our recommendations to address any possible legal liabilities or risks. So we have, uh, two sets of recommendations. The first relates to the zoning ordinance or the LAUDAC, which is the Land and Water Development and Use Code. And so three amendments would occur, uh, as proposed. The first would be to address the issue of where short-term rentals would be allowed. And that would be done by adding, uh, short-term rentals as a type one use in any zone where a single-family dwelling is permitted. And as a type one use, that means that there's no public notice and there's no public hearing that would occur, uh, before the permit would be issued. The second amendment to the zoning code would repeal sections 5.4900 through 5.4970. And those are the Arch Cape Short-Term Rental Operating Standards. And those standards would be moved from the zoning code to the Clatsack County Code. And then our final change to the zoning code would be to update the references, uh, to those Arch Cape operating standards to clarify that they are no longer in the zoning code, but they have been moved to the Clatsack County Code. And again, just to remind everyone, uh, under Oregon revised statutes, we cannot permit short-term rentals in farm and forest zones because th- those uses are set by state statute. So I will pause there for discuss, discussion, questions, uh, and direction from the board regarding these recommendations to the zoning code.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Bangs?
Okay, so my comments, um, revolve around whether or not this should fall under the county's purview. Decisions at the county level should be county-wide, I agree, and not specifically built for 1/10th of 1% of our population. Um, I don't feel that we have the capacity to micromanage at that level given how many tiny unincorporated communities reside in our county. I don't feel that it's fiscally responsible for us to set a precedence of small community market management that could otherwise be resolved through their incorporation or a type of HOA. Our county budgets are not built or funded to provide such a high level of service. So I began this process with a lot of empathy and a goal for compromise. And now, after 14 months of staff work, or over 14 months of staff work, abundant emails, phone calls and communications, uh, I felt my attempt at compromise last work session was met with a very negative response from the community of concern. And so, after a previous work session, I heard from my own constituents who own STRs and found that they were very happy with the status quo and are not experiencing any issues. That further solidified my thoughts that other than the zoning and LAUDAC issues, the rest should not fall under our purview. So I guess I'll summarize my thoughts that we should fix our zoning and LAUDAC issues and allow the community of concern to further explore incorporation, allowing them to provide a municipality level of service that they require. As a county, we cannot spend any more time unsuccessfully attempting to micromanage 1/10th of 1% of our, of our county. 14 months is too long and it only had our attempts of compromise being met with aggression. So that just solidifies my thought process that, you know, let's focus on our zoning and LAUDAC issues and, and, you know, let, let that county or that community of concern, um, further explore other options for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Any other comments? Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I'd like to hear what Commissioner Toyoka thinks and, and you think. I'd like to go last on this one, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Toyoka?
Well, I'm in agreeance. We should have, it should be a county-wide standard. Biggest comment is, you know, all the, we have a lot of correspondence. Obviously, uh, this is a hot topic, especially in South County and, and all of the commissioners. We've been receiving the same emails and letters. A lot of it, you know, is a lot due to what incorporation would do. It's that they want more than county-wide services. They want more municipal services, seemingly. And that's not going to come at a county level. So if you take out those, it does come down to, what does the law say for zoning and what, and then the LAUDAC. I think it's imperative that we, as a county, conform to the zoning laws. We, you know, we make sure we conform to LAUDAC. As far as municipal level services, I agree, we should, you know, we should explore, you know, incorporation for local communities who want greater level of services and more, you know, uh, autonomy. who want greater level of services and more, you know, autonomy. If that's, you know, because a lot of them, a lot of letters saying they want more autonomy. And I think it's only going to be achieved through incorporation. So that should be looked at, at their own level. Thank you.
Chair Quayle, you are, you are muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Geez, it was, it was so profound what I was saying too as well. No, I just, I, I agree with the staff recommendation and I'm glad we're cleaning up our zoning and LAUDAC issues. I, I do appreciate all the time that has gone into this. And I, I know that we tried to make some site-specific kind of attempts at addressing it, but I think we need to do something countywide. And I appreciate what's been done and support it. Commissioner Webb, I see, has joined us as well. So Commissioner Webb, we're, we're, we're having the SDR discussion and I'll go ahead and allow you to make any comments or ask any questions.
Thank you. Actually, I've been here all along. I'm just having internet. But I haven't been here, I've been, I've been, I had to call in, so there wasn't an opportunity to be, to be counted here, but I've been here. Yeah, first of all, um, I guess I am, I'm, I'm very much in support of the staff recommendation to clean up the zoning component that obviously we have been remiss in not addressing since, since 2018. I, I think it's, I think it's awfully important and I think that, that those who have been, basically, well, those who have been encouraging us to do so, I, I, I agree with, with their, with their comments in terms of, of the fact that allowable uses must, in the state of Oregon, it's very clear, very clear in the, in the case law that, that allowable uses must be stipulated in the zoning code. So I think we, we've simply got to clean up that, that part of this. I guess I don't agree that, that our standards for STRs should be uniform across the region, if that's what I, if I'm interpreting comments correctly. We have, we have, we have, in fact, in process, we have our planning areas for which we plan differently because local areas are different and have different challenges, different geography, et cetera. And so I, I'm not completely opposed to, to generating parts of our legislation, especially in LAUDAC, for, for different areas, because as I say, I think different areas are, are a bit different. I greatly sympathize with the people who live in Southwest. What I, what I regret is that we are, we have traditionally, historically and presently treated Arch Cape differently from its southern neighbors. And so having an Arch Cape specific component that does not include Falcon Cove and, and Cove Beach and, and those areas, I, I just think it's a mistake. When I am down in that area and, and I'm pretty sensitive to, to local boundaries, I don't know when I'm in one place or the other. I think it's a, quite a uniform environment. And so I'd like to see us address anything that we do in Southwest to include that entire area. I, I think the staff is not recommending that, but I guess I would encourage us to think in those terms if we're going to proceed with this. I also would like to confirm the fact that I, I think these folks need to incorporate. I regret the time that our staff has had to spend on this issue when there are so many other things on their agenda. We've heard fairly consistent arguments for and against present conditions. And, and I for one believe we have been very gracious in opening ourselves to public comment. I, in reviewing those comments recently, I've been on long airplane rides in the past couple of weeks. So I've had lots of time to do this. The comments now are at the point where we're not seeing anything new. And that tells me that, that we, that we have, have the range of comments that, that the, that our citizens have put forth. And with respect, now I think we can proceed to make some decisions. So that's, that's my, those are my comments on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your comments. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, thank you, colleagues. Thank you for letting me go last. I wanted to hear what you said because it's, it's always a challenge to, it, this is my neighborhood. This is my home. This is where my heart is. And, and we love it and we have different opinions, we neighbors. So the extent to which the staff and you, my colleagues, have really bent over backward to assure every single involved community member will be heard, their comments will be considered, absolutely will be considered. I had a phone call this morning, very, very touching phone call. So thanks, Beth, for reaching out. What we're looking at is how do we really support neighborhood livability? And colleagues, I think what you see is similar to what I see. We're heading toward incorporation because what we're seeing is the increasing urbanization. As a, as a Kobe's resident since 1999, it's like, well, Commissioner Webb, oh no, we're different. We're south of the tunnel. Well, we're south of the tunnel and be, and before the Nakarney Creek Bridge. So given any kind of catastrophic circumstance, we will be isolated with each other. So there's money, there's friendliness, there's survival, dear colleagues and friends and neighbors. How will we help each other survive day to day and given circumstances that we can't predict or control? I think the idea that we do a status quo and just hold it to Arch Cape for now, while we clean up our legal issues with the LAUDAC and the zoning code, I think that's a good step. I think it's a good step and I don't know how we encourage or support neighbors to do the evaluation and assess community willingness to do the hard work that's associated with looking for what's the appropriate legal foundation for our neighborhood. We've heard time and again from commissioners, how do we provide urban service levels with a rural tax base? And the answer is, we can't do that. We don't have the legal authority. We don't have the money. It just doesn't work. If our neighborhood needs to have this kind of protection, then it needs to have the legal foundation to do that. Now that puts us in the position of really pleasing nobody completely. And there's always the threat of dueling lawsuits, which I hope we can avoid. I would rather see negotiated settlements. I think lawsuits are a blunt form of public policy. I think it's weaponized. I think it's expensive. I think there are much better, more productive, more beneficial uses for our time, our talents and our treasure. And it's toward achieving neighborhood livability in, in circumstances that give us pause for consideration. We've had a three-year revision of the LAUDAC. We've had two years, because Commissioner Bangs, we didn't start out having those hearings. We started out hearing from folks. So it's been a long, very intense, very passionate and heartfelt outpouring of opinion and counteropinion and strategies and, you know, demands or suggestions or whatever. People care about this place. You care about it. Colleagues, thank you for your consideration. Staff, thank you for your recommendation. I support staff's recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments, questions, or we'll turn it back over to our community development director or county manager. Did you have something you would like to add?
I was just, I just wanted to summarize Chair Quayle, just regarding this one slide. From staff's perspective, we really want to support moving your board's direction forward. So at least with this slide, it appears that the board is supportive of, of us adding STRs as a type one use in all zones, except for those where it's not allowed. And to then remove the, the actual regulations into the code of regulation. So it sounds like that what we really need to then is to go to the next slide, which Gail will go through, which will talk about the particulars about how, how we deal with, with Arch Cape and/or Cove Beach areas and other amendments. So thank you, Gail.
Thank you. Okay, so talking about the operating standards, which would be located in the county code, staff has proposed two different areas of revisions. The first, which we just talked about, was to move the Arch Cape operating standards out of the zoning code and then move them over to our county code. And we would do that without any changes to those operating standards. So I will stop there and make sure that we have thoughts and discussion about that first proposed amendment.
Any comments, questions? Commissioner Webb?
I'm sorry, I, it's going to take me a little time. I'm just, like I say, I've got this, this issue going on here. The, I, I, I'd like to say as an experienced planner, that, that staff recommendation on this is, is absolutely consistent with local planning law in, in Oregon. One, all, you know, that there are certain things that go into a zoning code and there, and there are other things that, that don't. And I think that the, the operating standards are particularly important to keep discreet because of the use of staff time. This, this stipulates exactly how this process must work. And, and different from, in standard zoning, you have a process that goes until, until the, the development becomes a fact. And then you have different issues that ensue after that. And operating standards address the latter of those. And, and I think this has been very thoughtfully put together in terms of the staff capacity. We've, several of you have mentioned, and I'm so grateful for that, but the burden that this process, that our, that our reevaluation of this process in the last couple of years has placed on our staff. It's really been onerous. And this way, we're creating operating standards that, 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 that can work, that are within the capacity of our staff. So I think this, the separation of the two is, is very consistent with Oregon land use law. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I really appreciate your experience and perspective on this. Community Development Director?
Yes. Okay, so it sounds like there's agreement to move those Arch Cape standards over without any changes. The second amendment that was proposed by staff is the, relates to the existing regulations that would, operating standards that would control in the rest of the county outside of Arch Cape. And we made some recommendations as staff that we think would enhance the implementation of the short-term rental ordinance outside of Arch Cape. However, these are, again, things that staff is recommending, but would be changes for everybody else in the county. And we need some input and direction from the board on these. We don't think that there's anything that is extremely onerous, that would have an undue hardship or bearing on a short-term rental owners outside of Arch Cape. But this is really for your discussion and policy direction for staff. And I can go through each of these if you'd like, or if you have specific ones you'd like to ask about.
Any, any reason to go through it, or can we just ask some specific questions on these items? Folks have any specific comments on Good Neighbor Flyer, permit transferability, link to permit, any of these standards? Commissioner Webb?
Sorry, I, stop me if I'm getting down into the, too much intimacy gritty. But, um, I, I have an issue with sleeping area definitions. I think that in general, throughout the county, it's, it's, I think it's important to minimize in, in any location in the county. I think it's important to minimize the number of people who can be in a building for any purpose. And we do that in our, in our fire management codes. But the, the sleeping area definition is, is fraught, I think. And I'm wondering if, I guess, Gail, maybe you can help me out here. The, the Oregon Residential Specialty Code is, I mean, is, is what we're proposing here consistent with that? And is that the origin of, of the, this specific part of the code?
So the ordinance right now does have a definition of sleeping area. We worked with the building codes official to develop this revision that references how a sleeping area is defined to make sure that the, the emergency access requirements, either a window or a door are provided. Usually it's the extra window to have that extra egress. So he, he being our building official, David Kloss, has reviewed this definition and he actually came up with the proposed revisions.
Okay.
So we would be consistent with ORSC?
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other question? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Toyoka?
Thank you. Just a question for either Director Hendrickson or County Council on the permit transferability. My other question there was, since market values of the homes people have paid for are based upon having a permit, would that have any liability issues there? If it's, if we're permit, you know, if there's restrictions on the permit transferability and it affects the values, would that, is that open area for liability?
I, commissioners, chair and commissioners, thank you. Joanna Lyons-Antley. You know, I think, this is an excellent question and I think astute onto one of the concerns that the county has. So as you can see, one of the proposals here is to shorten the permit length from five to two years as well. As far as permit transferability, Arch Cape already prohibits transfer of STR permits. So this would make it consistent with the rest of the county. As far as liability and expectations, you know, it's hard to say what an individual investor would expect. But I would note that permits right now, currently everywhere outside of Arch Cape are five years. And that's not a forever permit, right? Every five years, they would have to reapply. So the, under staff proposals, it would, would prohibit transferring those permits and then shortening that permit length from five to two years. In a sense, it treats it more like a business, which short-term rentals, I think we can all agree, is a business. And this would be more consistent with business licensing that you may see in some of your cities. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, County Council. Any other questions? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Well, I'm, as you can imagine, I'm lobbied hard in all kinds of directions on this. Sometimes I feel like one of those pinballs in a pinball machine. There've been a lot of flippers operating and, and it's because people care, because they really want to see a neighborhood they love be the way they want it to be. And those are different. Those are different. When I look at permit transferability and I consider the issue of liability. When I look at permit transferability and I consider the issue of liability, I think that arises if there is a cap. We are not now proposing a cap. And and here's where it comes really down to it in terms of whose legal authority, because whoever has the legal operating authority is liable to lawsuits on one side or the other, depending on the standards that are established and enforced. So when we commissioners say to me and my neighbors, because I would be in that city, it's time for you to look at incorporation, then everybody who gets a vote will decide, do we want to incorporate or not? Does it pencil out? We can have the the recommendation that we would be about the size of Nahalem, we'd have more of a tax base, and we could provide greater services. Assuming legal responsibility provides legal authority, so people can say, these are the standards we want in our municipal entity. Well, then you have to elect people who will establish those standards, then you have to pay people who will enforce those standards, and then you have to respond to any lawsuits from someone who feels ill-treated. So with the authority comes the liability and the responsibility. That's what I want my neighbors to think about as we consider, how do we really establish neighborhood livability? How do we have a good neighborhood to live in? And right now, we're not talking about a cap. And for everyone who urged me pointedly and repeatedly, I said, I thought I had a button in my forehead, and believe me, that button has been pushed a lot. It has to be the appropriate legal authority, and that legal authority is not the county, I think. I needed to hear what my colleagues had to say. I wanted to hear how you and I and all of us would deliberate together. I didn't make up my mind. I didn't have a stand. I wanted a constructive deliberation. Well, what we have is a work session this morning, and I think, I think we have a common will to go forward. That's a long way of saying I don't have objection to the staff recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments on the staff recommendations or any of these standards? Commissioner Webb?
I really appreciate Commissioner Thompson's views on this. She's the one in the midst of this storm physically, and and I'd like to to commemorate her grace in throughout this whole period. I, too, have been directly lobbied, I'm sure we all have, by the folks in Southwest County. I have some questions, and I think at some point recently, I asked the staff what, I know that they've been looking at a lot of STR ordinances throughout the coast, and I specifically asked the question about about a cap relative to the percentage of housing units. And I think that's a very valid issue. It's also very fraught because it relates to density of of the environment. For instance, putting a cap countywide, to me, would would put a huge burden on on the folks who live in sparsely populated areas, who are our primary constituents. So I, you know, this is something I really kind of worked worked a little bit at, and I just think, you know, at first, I was actually kind of in favor of it, saying to myself, well, you know, who in the world would want to live in a community where 75% of the units were STRs? Well, it's just not that easy. And so I really appreciate where Commissioner Thompson has come down on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Just a reminder, if you are joining us, if you could make sure you're muted, I just heard a little bit of feedback there, and just make sure that your phone or your video feed is muted. Any other comments, questions? Gail?
Okay, thank you. So again, just to confirm, I did not hear anybody oppose to the amendments to section 5.12 that are opposed, so I just, or propose, sorry. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, I don't think that anybody has any objections to what's been, what the staff recommendation is.
Okay, sorry. All right. So then, moving forward, the the next steps in the process, our zoning code revisions will need to go to the Planning Commission, and we will be taking those to the Planning Commission on March 8th. We would then bring that Planning Commission recommendation forward to the board, and your board can either accept that recommendation, revise it, or reject it. And then the code ordinances or the code revisions would have a ordinance that would come directly to the board, and that we would anticipate that both of those ordinances, both to amend the county code and to amend the zoning code or the law duck, would have two public hearings, the first being April 13th, the second being April 27th, and then our current moratorium is set to expire on April 28th. And other than that, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have, and thank you again for the extra time today.
Thank you, Gail. Appreciate the presentation. Any questions, either on what the proposal from staff is or the process timeline and next steps? Commissioner Thompson?
I really, I want to echo everyone's appreciation for the staff effort and for really the heart and soul of the community that's been expressed repeatedly and passionately. We are, we are blessed to live in this place. We are blessed to be with each other. Let's go forth and do good together. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments? Not seeing none. Thank you very much, Gail, for the presentation and the good discussion. We don't have any other items on our agenda. Anything for the good of the order? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you very much. Have a good rest of your day.